I was born in Charlotte, actually.
United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, in liberty and justice for all.
For all you many blessed and honored, thanks to who you are and all you do. Most of all, we thank you for sending Jesus right on the cross, our sins to be forgiven. It is the reason that we're celebrating the season of the Rime. Just thank you so much for that. Those who are sick, those in hospitals, nursing, with whom we come to strengthen. As big as those who have lost loved ones recently, we're here to help them. Driving time, just asking out that we're with this meeting, this over the meeting. We approach the meeting board, asking out to link God directly. Thank my brethren. Like we've got some weird ones, it's been 20. This time, thank comments from residents, none but three minutes relating to current over and new bits on the agenda. Call meeting order. You have minutes, previous minutes, in your packet, right here, most of the previous minutes printed.
I don't know if anyone has what their email today or if anyone's received it today. I don't know how far spread, but this morning, my email was hacked. People around the state got an email from somewhere linked. I'll do all that right now too.
I just figured. No, I understand.
It's part of going through.
She asked me on Saturday night, she said, we're having a meeting. I said, yeah, okay, I'll be there. This one I thought. I'll do show.
He's like, head on the treasurer's report. Mayor's report. Nuclear meters in. Two pumps, we had review of that all, but everything's working in automatic. The soon plant back up one, everything's automatic now. We'll have to have the. On pump in January. And we still don't have anybody to certain levels. Have to call and see who can get it. We've got. Called, none of them yet. And you know, back when it's cold, we had all the leaks and. We had more sprinklers, one of them, and they're good. Found five. So the valves in turn to make everybody have water. We found a leak. Is that, is that, and he went out there today and dug it. About seven feet long. Just, they fixed it, but they got to go back tomorrow, fix the creek crossing. I mean, they found it to. And. We talked to the Sprouse, Sprouse Association last week. The audit, she can get our, she can full audit financial, or any year finances, we'll do a full audit. It's down, she's mid-January now.
To submit something to them in January.
If we don't write for the full audit, 21 audit.
Chair's report. This is then the end of the year, I'll try to expand on a little bit, kind of give you an example of the entire year for service. But Calico Rock for this past month. November 8th through the 12th of December, we've had 90 calls for service. Had six drug arrests, one being of the IRS, six of this. This sort of major mess. This year, the department, we've had 4,800, 950. Made with sheriff's office. Had a total of four burglaries for the year. Eighteen fat reports. EWI's 41. Nest experiences 46. Kind of takes actual actions. Some of the others, nobody could see some of that other, but that was the arrest for the year 140. Inmates in jail, inmate Dave, there was people. 10,000, 9,950. We've had. Restitution for. However, we pay back to other people from year 61,5200 dollars. We've given back to victims of crimes. We've served 18,056. So a lot of things have run on during the years. We've got a major portion of our program, enforcement activity. Those types of things continue to make this great. It's just out there, that's all I can say about it. But we have, we've got what we've got to do. Another area that was, was, this town about a year ago, this year, we have gotten applied for. Or receive, John, the money was about 340, 770. Some of that was to hire, old people and investigators, some of here with coworkers, staff. Fix them to the diction, that's all. We've done a lot of that now. I think right now, we actually placed about 70 people in a rehab to this new whole program, which is quite bright. I'm not telling. I don't speak of them. Cause they're all staying for about a year. That's a long haul for that type of thing. Another, maybe we've done some of this. They, about $55,000. We're going. Cameras without. First time we ever done that, but anyway, we've got a grant approved, five years of storage. Part of the cameras, what's the cameras inside? That was where we were pleased to get that. We had, they had $500,000 to give a young state, the various agencies. We got 10 percent, we got some checks, pretty good, you know? But anyway, that's just a, we're able to do what we tried to do this year. And we've done, city power, good job, I feel like we have.
I do too.
We want to continue, we want to continue to do that. When I hear that, I'll sit.
Thanks for the experience there tonight. Great.
We're just going to keep. Great job.
Tell them, tell them boys that work for you to appreciate. Every time I see them, I tell them, guys, I know.
I'll tell you what, I. But I hope they have, some of these leads, how crucial they are, what y'all do in terms of respect. The post that we got, so that, that's, that's pretty strong, like here's a chance to get that kind of thing going through us fast. And I, it's like I told you, and I believe this, kind of playing 10 years or so, you're gonna, you're gonna see that. You know, I think right now, we've got one of the best shirts part of the state office. I don't take credit for that anymore. And the road, it will just be better. Cause all that thing safe and place and it's not allowed to. To go everywhere, and if you get some good stuff, we can ship them. Anyway, thank y'all.
Thank you, Jeff. First of all, I'd like to mention, and I, and I. Didn't have a last council meeting. Jimmy King's not here tonight, but he did, he was instrumental in helping us move that compressor into the fireboat when it came. With the foreflip though. And I forgot to mention that last few months ago, when you were here, he's not here. Anyway, we've had a total of calls as of November the 8th. 19 calls. We've had 11 medical calls, had three fire calls, one major structure fire. Coast office, and I can't remember what the other was. For MBAs, and we've had one search and rescue, and that was on. Be a false alarm, it was at racetrack shows. You remember the accident a few weeks ago on the cul-de-sac, it occurred there at the. And she heard that. She heard the tires, the screaming and all that stuff, and she thought somebody had crashed in the river. So we responded to the call. I could not throw the call, had to put a boat in and. Go in to, to lay eyes on that down there. We put it in, we almost got back with it, some damage, threw the motor before we got back. And so it's out of commission right now. In the process, following week, David and Cheryl McCullough, and Jaden Spoke, our Calico, donated a 20-foot riverboat to the fire department for low-water search and. Rescue. We have that now. Motor for that and a trailer for that, which we have, which came to about $2,400 with the 20-horse Mercury. We got. On the regular prop. And Chris Jackson is working on that now to get. So we'll have something to do with water. We had three, three of the pumpers tested a few weeks ago, they all passed it, had to put it running. One other thing, I want to mention Charlie, he has donated a 30-horse Kevin Ruth for, for a rescue boat, which we're going to use until we can do something a little better. We're having problems finding parts for that motor, it's 19, right? But in the meantime, we've had three test pumps, all the trucks packed, truck, intro classes, we did pine. They'll have the one tanker truck at the north. I have some parts the other day for that, I hope that they work, I've tried to call them today, they didn't call them back. Soon they're going to work. But I will find that out tomorrow. That's all I've got to, right now. Got this council. Years. Keep right. Prayer changes things. I appreciate, I appreciate that. And Jack, appreciate you, appreciate you. I know, I've been there. Thank you, Jeff, thank you.
Gloria would love to have been here, but she has surgery. I just got an email just now, it says, she's out of surgery. She's in recovery. She'll be, she had knee surgery. The, will be open, the visitor center will be open the rest of this month, except for regular hours, except. The regular hours, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday of the last week. Will be closed Friday, that's New Year's Eve, and then they'll be closed all of January. That's the visitor center. And then the visitor. The marketplace, I'll be more than the visitor center. The marketplace will be closed, but I will be there and available for all the vendors, all of them. Be rearranging their booths, setting up new. Freshening up. And sales. Going up. No, Jackie's not doing very good, but COVID itself isn't bringing sales down. The, the Charlie and Janice said they estimated 9,000 people. Not for the parade, that's the fire department, thanks as we count. The deputies. Wonderful down there.
It was awesome.
It was really great, it was really fun. Had a very, we had more clothes, I think, than we've ever had, definitely more clothes. Our hearts did get first place in the window. Gay hearts. And when it showed that people ready to. So yay for the economy, yay for Calico. I went down there this morning to pick that.
I picked that sound in front of my turret on Sunday. It's so great.
I picked that sound this morning. Any other question? But Gloria, Gloria will be in the office in January, so you can call the visitor center from the phone. There's, it won't be open for. It won't, won't let's open. But there will be somebody else for, for the contact information, I'm just not.
Next, John French is. Enus. Resolution. 2021, which one?
For the city operations from January 1st, 30th. The Calico Rock City Council, the Toronto Mayor's line item increases for city operations from January 1st through December 3rd is reasonable improvement. And there as Arkansas law requires the governing body before December 31st, 2021 to adopt line item adjustments by ordinance or resolution for operation of the city. Should be approved and adopted, therefore be resolved by the city council, the Calico Rock Arkansas as follows. The city council approves and adopts the. Mayor's line item adjustments for city operations from January 1st, 30th and 31st.
In motion. Frank Emption to approve the resolution in 2021.
I have a motion to your second.
Second.
We have a motion and second, with more discussion.
We are going to hit the two fifty on the running. $190,000 to the West Plains Fund Council. That's just too much money, not to be, in the business account.
Two things in there, I mean, $111,000 of it is where the, the program that went to the airport mission. And then the other.
The office. $180,000.
I mean, there isn't.
I'm just going to see that as far as business here.
Another part of what's in there is. Works into the ARP fund, kind of worked out, it's just never. In these, and like I was telling Sharon this year, you know, they kind of made some changes to how they wanted the fire department budget broken down. This is just how this has been. Some changes, and I've asked y'all about some changes. I can make change, I can split it out as much as you want, or as little as you want.
John, can you fit with our check?
We're back, gentlemen, slow delivery.
That's good.
Give you your quick. Any more discussion?
Jackie?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
Next is Red's List in 421, actually.
And I talked about fluoride, about discontinuing, treating the fluoride. I listened to that, I was on there and you were. Well, I've seen it from a city standpoint now, and it's, it's very corrosive, very dangerous, and it's very expensive. Just. Four wheels, and it's $250 a month per wheel. We have to. All month long, there's those little valves for the. Takes a pipe in the wheel too, or no wheel five, because it had eight holes in it. Then to feed the fluoride. I have a, a safety data sheet here. Tells you the exposure guidelines, that tells you. You have to do skin. Of course, protection, vitamin exposure, controls, general hygiene considerations. It goes, it's just several pages of it, on the. Very dangerous stuff. Go down, tight ceiling glass, so it doesn't get to your eyes. If you have glasses on, it gets on your glasses, it will etch your glasses. It is an acid. I said when we voted to do this. We've got this presentation along with the other one, I probably, I probably look up and I would get the other one tonight, but it was a. We live in different, different counties. We live in different, different counties. The only other place in. Kind of, the only other one. Nobody else does, us and God. And then. I don't think there's anybody in Sharp or Baxter County. Lakeview does, Mountain Home does. Northeast Water Association, whoever that is, the rest doesn't.
Water Association as well, which is big.
Lot, three yeses and the rest are no, the extra county. Fulton County, we're all. Water Associations and these two. Valves doesn't say them, that's a. County, Act Black doesn't, K City, Water Works, Cherokee Village, none of those, none of them. I can get you all copies of this. Safety data sheet, go over and all look at it and study it. Something like that.
Dennis, Dr. John Lane.
Yeah, I talked to John Lane, he was a big pusher for it. Former. Long cop. He said after Stephen showed me the dad on. Right now, all the processes are, are done with the bigger city. Now that's four out here, he said. He said he didn't have a problem.
Reason whenever we've done that before, I put. Twenty something hours in. On the researching. The one thing that, you know, and I voted for it too, you know, even though I was hesitant, because they pushed so. Far. There's a, and I can't remember the town and who's there, because one of the barrels busted on one of their employees. And ended up two point three million dollars.
That's gross.
It's, it's. But I was like red, we was on there at the same time, that was a big deal. A push. But man, I'm telling you everything that I have read on, I've got. Around that every day, and it's going to eat you to something eventually, just like it might. It, barrel, even the containers that come in only last so long.
And it's not going to count.
It's very dangerous, very dangerous.
I didn't know it was that way until I been mayor and I told.
I have to do that everywhere you said too.
Yeah.
Uh, definitely, if someone tried to sue. And, I mean, I mean, generally cities are immune to poor liability, but that doesn't stop you from doing stuff.
Unless you're one. Pretty much.
Number twenty twenty-one dash oh eight, a resolution for leaving mayor's proposed budget for city operations. From January thirty first, twenty twenty-two. Whereas Calcorock City Council has determined that the mayor's proposed budget for city operations from January. Arkansas law requires the governing body before February first, twenty twenty-two, to adopt a budget by ordinance or resolution. And whereas the city council has determined that the attached budget should be approved and adopted. Therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Calcorock, Arkansas, as follows. Adopt the attached mayor's proposed budget for city operations from January first through December thirty-first.
Motion. Stacy, what does unallocated mean? On the general funded. Revenue and expenditure, revenue. Does that mean?
Why would that be on the general fund, unless it shows unallocated on general?
ARPA fund, revenue, unallocated. Grand income, hundred made, what does unallocated mean? What does that word mean?
It means that it's not assigned to a department. So up here in the general fund revenue, we just. Have one department, it's just revenue.
All right. Revenue, unallocated. Down about eighty-nine. E tax. A hundred and eighty thousand. Well, a lot of that money is allocated.
It's all allocated. There's just no department that says this is the revenue department. Department revenue. All the money is allocated by line item.
If we, if we change, we're going to improve this wherever that, when they vote or whatever, but well, if we decide to do it in the budget already right for this point.
It's budget.
We can change that in January, changing, if we do try to decide to change it at the council, we can, it won't affect that, it'll just come off the budget.
Right.
As we.
Probably surprised everyone, right?
Charlie.
There are two figures that are not on here that would sure help me keep days, days. Why? What is the total? What the, you use to describe it, what's the total amount of revenue that comes into the city in that year? We're projecting, total revenue.
Total revenue across. Of ones.
Well, total amount of money that's going to oversee in there.
Two million six hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and one.
And the total of the spending are due projected for the year twenty twenty-two.
Two million sixty-eight thou. What's budgeted in the principles? Two million sixty-eight thousand.
You, we have a budget that's wanting to lose. Almost four hundred thousand dollars.
I know.
Why would you plan to do?
And I'm scared this year, I'm not going to lie, our overages are scary this year. It's about fifty percent.
Everything's increased, yeah.
It's, I mean, I'm scared, these are operating.
Here too, but I've forgotten some operating somewhere. This is Cal. We're here to, we're here to protect it. Done wisely. And I'm not sure four hundred thousand dollars is wise. I'm voting no.
How it's really totally expensive.
That is budgeted.
That's budgeted.
For the time being.
What, what, Stacy, what are we going to end up? Do you know what I'm looking for it down? This year, after this month, are we under total budget?
Right now, we still have approximately a hundred thousand dollars in both the water and sewer. We got two hundred thousand dollars carryover in street fund. So we're not going into the. So expensive this year, I'm a lot worried about next year.
We were negative last.
We're negative when we.
Saying we're at a hundred thousand and.
No, no, don't give us any carryover. Actual income expenses for twenty twenty-one, we should, we should end up.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I haven't done those pictures yet.
It doesn't appear that, is it?
Is a hundred thousand in the good right now?
Right. And then we've got approximately a hundred in each water.
But street fund is a carryover from previous, you're also.
Well, all that will be carryover.
All of it, that's all, all of it.
And the bad thing is, is their budget budget for this low census too.
Got three project, big projects right now, that we usually don't have. And Christine, we've had to pay them several thousand dollars.
We're going in the good. I'd like to know, I don't want to end a year in the mine.
Right now, I'm telling you, I mean, you can see our balances whenever I run my financials each month.
I can't remember the amounts last year we were in the, we started out the same way, it was the same thing.
I mean, that's how budget. Always goes, that's how we've been told kindly to do it.
Remember how we end up?
We ended up in the good in twenty.
But we have to do it the facts. What we need to compare is. It's over to the plus each year, over to the negative. Over not anything else, just with the positive for that year, I would have budgeted the same if we don't get it back, I don't get budgeted dinner, but the question I want to know, but if you take a margin, ten a month, six, ten a month, eight, ten a month? It does come back. And, you know, these questions are things. These train, if you compare it always consistent, when it lives in money. It's consistent, budgeting my ability to process where it's been done, or in a root. Coming out the good, adjust the budget, budget, you know, as a group, so it's closer to what it is.
Just because somebody in that office has done it, because I've been told to do it that way by state office. There's, there are reasons that it, budget high and the expenses and low. And I mean, a lot told me, don't. You know, don't like budget to the nearest hundred, you know, bump it up, give yourself room, I don't know. What their reasoning behind it is. Not necessarily, they're not saying things like that.
That's, you know, that's, I think it's concerning, what we need to, you know, try to, in case it does not go our way, it hasn't been going our way. And we give a little extra here that. Air Force, you know, revenue. During the pandemic, it'd be hurting. Huge for us. So that's why, I mean, but that's something where five years ago. The budget, we know last year and this year, we need to, we need to adapt as a council to understand what's coming in. But I think what everyone was expressing is for it to be reflected in heavily. And I mean, and I. It requires some budget meetings and people coming in here and just talking and.
Yeah, that's going to take us sitting down and working together.
Exactly, you can't.
Why don't we do that? With the budget. We. We don't have, like, we don't have a big bunch of playground equipment in the parks.
That's not one of your risky at all.
I know, I'm just. Telling you, I am scared this year because prices have gone up here. I've not been, I've not been.
This year, right?
Um, that's, yeah.
That's all put in this, right?
But that's out public, Stacy, that's all out this year too.
But it's all. I think Stacy is, is adding into the total revenue, right?
It is. But.
Let me ask you, you may, you may have went over it regularly, what are they saying, census? Have you heard?
We probably talked about that in the budget. We can't do the appeal till after January third. And we're supposed to be receiving the letter sent on or after December first, telling us what we have to do. But we talked warm, what, last week too. Think there'd be a big problem. But we can't do anything till after January third, we can't file an appeal till after January third. We first go December first, then after January third.
Can you? Since you've worked on this. Can you give? What you have that causes, you know, the difference in, different out last year's.
Yes, it's approximately fifteen hundred dollars a month, general funds and four thousand dollars a month.
I knew it was.
Man, I was a street.
Street funding? Do, I mean.
And that's all we were to stay. Christian.
Right, we actually should have increased by two hundred.
So you're probably talking seventy thousand plus dollars there, revenue.
We should be able to go back. To get, yeah.
More of what I read in your web last.
So we need to talk. That's going to be the fire department. I was trying to look at that, what, what did we, I know Jeff had proposed last month, and then y'all, the committee talked about it, so I'm not, what did we do on that?
We, they're looking at a service trip.
And? Yeah, Jeff, I'm just, Greg, I'm just asking, our. We've got twenty thousand in equipment expense, so we've added, I don't. We've got twenty thousand in equipment expense, so we've added, I don't know if I wrote down this, I don't know, twelve grand on that particular line item. And I'm not saying I'm opposed to the truck, I mean, that's not my point. Saying we added some to the fiber, did we not? What I wanted to know.
Yeah, and. These complete packs. There's a couple.
You want to have expenses.
You have some of that.
You won't have any bottles, you know, we would have purchased those, but.
SCBA. Had some of those.
Would have purchased those.
Have turnouts?
No turnouts. This is a rapid response truck. It carries. Water, it carries education equipment, it carries medical equipment, it carries rescue equipment. It carries an ISO rating, we're fully equipped to three hundred and forty-six points. The reason that we're looking at this, we did talk about. Last, last month. In a way to, to try to drop. In talking with the budget committee last week. You know, my biggest problem that I'm having is manpower, of course you guys. You know, this truck here is, is mental manpower. One man could handle it. For firm, one man could handle it, you have your water, you can have your education, you can have your SCBAs, you can have your rescue. Same, and you can get into places. Take a, a big engine, you know, so it's, it's a rapid response, it's kind of like SWAT team. Community. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh. Yeah, it's. Got a. Diesel engine in it. The belt is right there, it's a local truck. It's all been built right there, it could serve the community.
I was at the meeting with Jeff, I wholeheartedly endorse everything he talked about, it's just.
The little truck fit the application better, because they, they don't have manpower. That's why we roll in right by the little truck.
We talked about that last month, I don't, whatever he thinks I'm good with.
Greg, if you'll explain the, the process of loan, you've talked to Jared.
Jared, we have the loan on the truck now is due again in January twenty twenty-three, which we are here again. And he looked and there's right at forty thousand left on it. We take thirty thousand of the public safety money, put that on it, and add that hundred twenty that's left, and if they do another four-year loan, it'll bring monthly payments to thirty-five, thirty-six hundred dollars a month.
You good with that?
It'll work better, fit better. Because I understand the manpower. He does. With the flow.
The leaky roof, we want to drive it to approach that, the city laborers, try to fix it, look and fix it. Mails, still screwing with the, the seals, but. Seals, but. Lot of big screws, the mail backed out, get up there and pull in, put some new device, and reseal the whole roof. And see if that takes care of the leaky roof.
One other thing I got to mention about this truck.
And see if that takes care of the leaky roof.
One other thing I got to mention about this truck, it does have a foam tape on it. Uh, so I have water and foam both. You know, particularly on vehicle accidents, if you've got fire, people in traffic. You can.
Any more special?
Then we table this, and have another meeting too, with the President of the Committee.
If I could add, no, I'm not supposed to. Holding this truck for us, England Fire Department is wanting it also. We. Might be morning, no, in the morning. Or it's gonna go away. To England. But if you don't approve the budget by the end of the year, then. So what I understand it is. Pay bills and cut checks and stuff, y'all. Pay bills and cut checks and stuff, y'all will have to approve every, every expense until a budget is passed.
Well, you're talking about putting thirty down on the. Dollar anyway, has nothing to do with that. And setting up with the bank for monthly payment, it's our existing loan, or anyway, has nothing to do with that. And setting up with the bank for monthly payment. So we could do that, and it has nothing to do with this. I'm, I'm assuming. I mean, is this the count? The purchase of that truck tonight? Is that what you're saying, Jeff?
It go away.
Budget now, we need to. I, I'm with. I know this way it's done, Charles, in a lot of ways, I'm. I don't understand budgeting more than you think you're gonna. It's done, Charles, in a lot of ways, I'm. I don't understand budgeting more than you think you're gonna have, have, or show them, but I get it. I'd like to see it more in life. But, having said that. This year, especially in office supplies. We budgeted five thousand and we've ended up spending way over five thousand. So I can see. We budgeted five thousand and we've ended up spending way over five thousand. So I can see where that. Happens. Don't like it, but.
Well, we didn't need a ton of us, did we?
That being said, I don't know why we would exaggerate. When you know if it comes to that, we're gonna do it anyway. So that's, that's all I'm saying on the budget.
I think because they like it to be on the front end, not on the back end.
Well, I don't know how to get your word out, but if I was a taxpayer, Stacy, sitting at home beating this. Million bucks, and they budgeted two million. That don't make sense to me, and that's all, that's all we're saying, I think. Now, if you explain it, I understand it more.
We have a motion in the second on the resolution right now. Go call vote.
Where are we going now?
Particularly.
On the table.
About your motion, Charles.
Well, actually, you got to clear this budget, we can do that anyway.
Did you get a motion to accept the budget?
No.
I thought we did, yeah. There's a motion on the floor to do with buying the truck right now, am I correct?
The budget.
Oh, well, it's okay.
You'll get to that in a minute.
Yeah.
Got it.
We can go here, I think we can go here and hook through the truck.
I mean, issue could be right here on the budget, or right now. I, I think Charles. I heard you said, that's one second, that's one second.
That's why I was wondering if, did we ever have a motion on this proposed budget? No.
The table.
I second Charles's motion.
Motion, let's take it to table this, have some more readings on it. Go call vote.
What's the deadline we have? To have this done?
By law, you have to pass the. Budget by January thirty-first. What I'm telling you though, is about.
Okay, yes, then. I just want to make sure.
Because we're, we're, they haven't talked about it this year.
If not, then you're gonna have to get a phone call.
As long as we got a window where we can work, I'm good.
End of this in?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Stephen?
No, I mean, I.
This is after the vice, but I would, so you need to try to get this down. We asked for it, we need to step up and.
Set up.
Let's go tomorrow.
Got us to where I.
Let's go tomorrow.
Let's set up. I don't want.
Let's go tomorrow.
It's pretty important, is there any ball being thrown?
Tomorrow.
Nah, I don't want.
Let's go tomorrow. Tomorrow.
It's pretty important, is there any ball being thrown?
Let's do this tomorrow, that's real, it's only because orange, really worth it. There are all the, are all the names, you guys are not tomorrow. Well, no, Stacy's, no, Stacy's really, I'm talking about Stacy though, she's, she's talking about, she's involved.
No, it's not basketball, I don't, we're talking about Harbly, Harbly, yeah.
Well, this thing's table, right?
Yeah, but I'm.
Jim?
I'm confused.
We'll be back tomorrow night. We'll do it back, probably through Wednesday. Try to do it Thursday. I'm gonna try to get everybody here.
Is this a budget committee meeting, or the whole council?
The council's a lot of time.
Yeah.
Man, I'm just curious.
It's budget meeting, but full council.
Full council's about it.
So all questions can be.
No prayers allowed.
Now I'm gonna be there, man. Screech stuff, man.
Come here. Now we can make the most of the trip. On the truck. I'm. After five. Second. Any more special?
Jackie?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Stephen? Rick?
Yes. So that's gonna be five, that's gonna be five. Finance, you guys are gonna finance that?
Most of it's here.
The truck? Is that so?
It's a good truck.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to get the numbers right. Okay, thank you.
We're gonna combine what's left with the other one. It's gonna be five hundred and sixty thousand. Do you have anything else?
Motion to adjourn. Most kind of aggressive, having bothered once again with employees, Lord, just actually look down on, this summer, you know, who, I didn't know why they had bored, actually, for being made for my shortcomings and inequities, and draw an eye to you, Lord. For our city and our people and our. Community. Lord, we want to raise all the people that do this tolerated damage and stuff up here in a special way, give them the comfort that they need at this time, watch over the country, Lord. Leadership, to God. Watch over, protect each other, and act like we're one. In Christ's most precious name. Amen.
It sucks. Mitch, I, I thought I passed these out, I'm needing to go. Explains the service truck and everything it needs, something to get this many appointments to. I know, I know, I know, I just want everybody to, and they live. Then this one, everything.
I said, wait the, wait the, wait the.
Or it's fine.
Yeah, but this is Arkansas, well, they got Eagles here too, right? Yeah, but this is Arkansas. Well, they got Eagles here too, right?
Can we ever get to the point that. Ryan's something.
I don't know about.
I don't think the people are that likely to pay their.
So, you know, I don't think I have. I said, all you got to do is look at the numbers. We go at that six hundred, I mean, we budgeted our actual revenue for twenty twenty. This is what we budgeted, our general revenue.
Six hundred and sixty thousand.
So, for, for, actual, so far this year, over a million.
I might get money in there, but it's not four hundred and something.
Please just go back there. Five years.